Good evening, I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting for November fourteenth to order. And I would like to invite everybody to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence to think about the victims of the Sawdust shooting incident. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call? Here.
Here.
Here?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Smith did send a letter prior to the meeting stating that he had a work conflict this evening, so may I please get a motion to excuse him?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, Commissioner Smith's absence is excused. And that brings us to item four on our agenda, the review of the agenda.
Madam Chair, we do have one revision to the agenda. There's a supplemental staff report in front of you regarding item eight H regarding a condition of approval and modifying a finding.
Thank you very much. Alright, that brings us to item five, may I get a motion to waive the full reading of resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Alright, motion passes, thank you. That brings us to item six, public comments on our consent calendar items or on any items that are not on our agenda this evening. Our consent calendar consists of approving the minutes from last month's meeting, so if anybody is here to speak on that or on any items that are not on our agenda, please come forward, state your name and you will have three minutes. Okay, I see no public comments. Item seven is our consent calendar. May I get a motion to approve the consent calendar? I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Alright, the consent calendar is approved. That brings us to the beginning of our public hearings. And I would just like to ask everybody, if you are coming up to speak, there are speaker slips at the dais. If you can at least fill them out, so that we get your name spelled right for the record. You will have three minutes to speak on any item and we will not be engaging in dialogue with you. So if you have questions, I will be writing them down and we will make sure that we get them answered prior to the vote. So that brings us to item eight A.
This item will be presented by Justin Sauter.
Good evening, Planning Commission. The applicant has requested a ten-year time extension for an existing major communication facility located at twenty-one twenty-one East Palmdale Boulevard and it's behind the building located here. There are no upgrades or changes to the existing monopole, however, there's currently barbed wire on top of the equipment enclosure, which is not allowed in the commercial zone. As you can see here, the project has been conditioned to remove the barbed wire. Another security measure may be utilized, but barbed wire is specifically prohibited. The Planning Commission has three options tonight. Option one is to approve the project, option two is to continue the project, option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Alright, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak, please come forward and state your name and you'll have three minutes to speak. Okay, seeing no one here, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Any commissioner discussion? If there's no discussion, may I get a motion, please?
I motion to approve conditional use permit zero-nine-zero-two, time extension number one. I find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
And use your touchscreen, please.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner French and a second from Commissioner Avery. Any discussion on the motion? Then we shall call for the question. Let the record show that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. And that will bring us to item eight B.
This report will be presented by Skip Smith.
And good evening, Planning Commission. Okay, so the applicant, Jasmine Montez de Oca of the Camp Transformation Center has submitted a request to establish a health and wellness fitness studio a use within an approximate four thousand square foot existing tenant space located at three-zero-zero-five East Palmdale Boulevard. This slide shows the existing tenant space within an existing shopping center that was built in nineteen eighty-seven according to the Los Angeles County Office of the Assessor. And the floor plan submitted shows the proposed fitness studio use, which includes an open training area, workout equipment, storage space, and two ADA Americans with disabilities at compliant restrooms. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday from four AM to ten AM and four p.m. to ten PM. And then Saturday and Sunday, seven AM to ten AM. And the proposed use and the ongoing operation of the use will not have a substantial adverse effect on a building property since there are no sensitive land uses in the vicinity. And the building is also located in the center of the parking lot, as we saw in that previous slide there. And and for security purposes, the Camp Transformation Center will be equipped with a closer grid television system, which will have a total of eight cameras aimed at the front doors, back doors, front desks, storage room, workout floor, and cubby area. The CCTV system will record all activity twenty-four hours per day and the recording will be saved electronically off-site for thirty days. And the three options for the Planning Commission are to approve, continue, or deny the project. And option one is recommended. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome.
Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time?
Just a small little thing I noticed on condition number twenty where it says the side door shall remain closed. It's two side doors, I just just curious.
Oh, for the two side doors, mainly
Like a condition twenty?
Condition twenty.
If it's the desire of the commission, the condition could be modified just to read all doors, all side doors.
The way I look at it is the door on the west side is facing towards a street that's not sure what the noise issue would be there. Maybe the other one is what was meant to be said, but I just wanted to clarify that for the applicant. Agree to these conditions and they question whether, what side door needs to be opened. You see that?
Yeah, definitely. And because they believe on the floor plan, they see the one. Oh, here we go, okay. Okay, so the one of facing east, number two exit door, okay, I see. Okay, yes, so we
I think I would agree with Mr. Bruce that if we modify that to say all side doors shall remain closed. Good catch, Commissioner Avery. Extra points for you.
Ten hours on an airplane.
Okay, any other questions for staff at this time?
I was wondering about the parking, there's not a lot of parking spaces, but maybe this is just not that intensive of a of a use, there's not as many people. Is the applicant here?
We will be able to address that during public hearing time, thank you. Did you have a comment on the parking, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, for the parking, one of the conditions is to limit the class sizes to thirty-five members for each class size with the exception on Wednesday evenings from seven to eight, the class size is going to be reduced even more to fifteen members just because there's a recharge church there that might generate even more, you know, traffic and cars and so so by limiting the class size of particular on that Wednesday night from seven to eight will allow the other two minutes available parking.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name and you will have three minutes to speak. Is the applicant here? Will you please come forward? And what is your name?
Jasmine Montez de Oca.
Okay, Jasmine, we do have a concern about the parking there. How comfortable are you with that? It has parking around?
I'm very comfortable because our sizes is probably going to be an average about twenty, maybe twenty-two on average. But we did a parking analysis and we determined that for Wednesday at seven, we're going to have to reduce it like Mr. Skip mentioned, to just sixteen. So we're just going to limit the size on that specific day because we are aware there is, currently there's a church service on that particular evening.
I know with the type of club that you have, it's usually like a more intimate, like fewer people, right? Training?
Right, we're not a big box gym, so
Because at the bigger ones, it's like there's never enough parking. And they're always overflowing into all the other areas for parking, but I just noticed that this particular facility had very few parking spots to begin with, like right in front, there's like a dozen. So you're probably going to have issues with the parking, but it have a very small amount of people there. And it always is a small amount, then maybe it's not an issue.
Right, we know the facility is not that big as well, so we definitely don't want to be crowded in there. So it's more tailored to more personalized, small boot camp.
Got you, okay, thank you.
And with the changing of that one condition, condition twenty, all side doors must be closed from seven PM until closing to abate potential noise nuisance, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And have you read and understood all of the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Then may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner discussion? I am happy that somebody is looking to filling a vacant property over on the east side, I think that's a good thing. And if it will get people in shape, then it's an even better thing, so that is exciting.
Well, that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve case number CUP nineteen dash zero-one-five, approving the request to establish a fitness studio use and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. Well, as amended, by the way. Now I mean, now I hit the button.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, then we shall call for the question. I'm supposed to slow down, I forgot. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. Congratulations. That brings us to item eight C.
This item will also be presented by Skip Smith.
Good evening, once again. Okay, so the applicant of Royal Investors Group LLC has submitted a request for a second and final three-year time extension to previously approved tentative track map six-one-seven-three-one. And the project location is south of Avenue Q twelve in east of Sixtieth Street East. And here's a photo of the site looking east from Sixtieth Street East. And here's a photo of the site looking north. The track map shows the subdivision of thirty-six single-family residential lots in one detention basin. All lots meet the minimum lot width, depth, and area requirements per the Palmdale Municipal Code. And there is one point of access from Sixtieth Street East into the subdivision. Three internal streets are provided, which consist of two cul-de-sacs and one street segment designed to provide access to future residential developments to the north and south. And the Planning Commission has the following options, approve, continue, or deny the project. And option one is recommended. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions on this one as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions for staff at this moment? Alright, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If you're here to speak on this item, please come forward and you'll have three minutes. Okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye, any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Any discussion and if no discussion, may we get a motion using our touchscreen?
I move to adopt resolution PC twenty nineteen dash zero-four-four, approving tentative track map six-one-seven-three-one, time extension number two, and find that the project is consistent with the previously approved mitigated negative declaration.
A second? I have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner French, any discussion on the motion? Alright, then I shall call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. That will bring us to item eight D.
And one more time for Skip Smith.
Go Skip.
Okay, hi again, everybody. And the applicant, once again, whoops, let's go back here, okay, there we go. Yes, so the applicant again is Royal Investors Group LLC. They've submitted a request for a second and final three-year time extension to previously approved tentative track map six-five-two-seven-eight. And the project location is at the southwest corner of Thirtieth Street East and East Avenue R four. And here's a photo of the site looking north from East Avenue R six. And here's a photo of the site looking south from East Avenue R four. And the track map shows the subdivision of seventeen single-family residential lots. All lots meet the minimum lot width, depth, and area requirements per the Palmdale Municipal Code. And there is one point of access from Avenue R four into the subdivision. Approved tentative track map six-four-one-eight-eight is directly to the south of the subject site. And is a mirror image of the proposed layout for this tentative track map six-five-two-seven-eight. And when this map is constructed, a second point of access will be improved. Improved and the residents will have access to Avenue R six. And the Planning Commission has the following options, to approve, continue, or deny the project. And option one is recommended. And that concludes my presentation and I'm also available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from the commission for staff at this time?
I have a question for, I guess applies to all of them. So these were approved in oh-six. If they had come in, let's say today, and we're going to do the same project, have the guidelines changed at all since two thousand and six, or would it be about the same?
The guidelines would actually be the same, and also the conditions as well.
Oh, okay. Nothing's changed. Thank you.
Sure.
We do make it a policy to bring to the Planning Commission's attention any time that we're bringing forward a map that no longer meets the current code requirements.
Thank you. Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name and you will have three minutes. Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing?
And a second.
I have a motion to close the public hearing and I have a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Any commissioner discussion?
Got a lot going on over at Thirtieth East, don't we?
May I get a motion on this item?
I motion to adopt resolution number PC two-zero-one-nine-zero-four-five, approving tentative track map six-five-two-seven-eight, time extension number two. I find that the project is consistent with the previously approved negative declaration.
I have a motion from Commissioner French. And I have a second from Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Then we shall call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion carries with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. This brings a change of staff over there, doesn't it? You're off the hot seat, Skip. Okay, that brings us to item eight E.
This item will be presented by Matthew Alcaron.
Good evening. The applicant has submitted a request to construct one building approximately four thousand two hundred thirty square feet and expand an existing religious assembly use. The proposed church expansion will be located at three-zero-two-zero East Palmdale Boulevard, I'm sorry, that's the wrong address, on Avenue R eight and shown in the red box. The original project was approved in two thousand and fifteen with a seven thousand eight hundred thirty-seven square foot building. Due to budget constraints, a reduced building footprint has been proposed. Per the municipal code, this requires a major modification. Here are the photos showing the current site conditions. The top one looking from Avenue R eight. The bottom one shows a view from Thirtieth Street East. This is the overall site plan, showing the entire one acre for the proposed religious assembly use. The proposed expansion will include the new church, outdoor activity court area, with three standalone open trellises. The project will also be constructed to include onsite improvements, such as a new parking lot, perimeter fencing, and desert landscaping. Offsite improvements will include a new curb, gutter, and sidewalk. Here is the floor plan for the church, which includes a worship area, offices, and classrooms for Sunday school. Here is a view of the north elevation from the open courtyard. The new church building will include tile roof, cornice treatment, and decorative glass windows. Here is a view of the south elevation looking from Avenue R eight. A view looking east from the new parking lot. And a view from the west elevation looking from Thirtieth Street East. In conclusion, the three options for the Planning Commission are to approve, continue, or deny the project. Option one is recommended, that concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alcaron. Are there any technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward. I do have two speaker slips on this item, so I will begin with Marta Candre. Marta? Okay, so you are the applicant?
No, the applicant is Mr. Herman.
Herman, okay. So does anybody have any questions for the applicant? So were you able to do any construction with the original plan back in two thousand and fifteen? Had any improvements been done since then?
No, because we did all the plans, then we started getting a proposal. The church find out that they didn't have enough money to build it, so that why we have to do all over again and reduce the size of the building.
Okay, so does it seem more feasible now with this new plan? Okay.
We already have the approved, the loan to do the construction. We already have building plans ready to be submitted.
Okay, and you've read and understand all of the conditions and requirements and all of that?
Yeah, the applicant is okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you leave any room for maybe future expansion if it if it needs to be bigger?
We have no room for future expansion because the parking lot for churches is very, is a lot of parking lot requirements. However, they got the property on the on the east side, so maybe in the future we're going to do something, but no for now.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? She spoke for both people on these things, so we are good. May I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner discussion? Once again, more activity over on Thirty-First East, but that's a good thing.
That's what I said, most of this evening is over on Thirty-First East.
Alright. Who wants to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion on this. I move to adopt resolution PC twenty nineteen dash zero-four-seven, approving SPR nineteen dash zero-one-six and CUP fourteen dash zero-two-eight.
SPR nineteen dash zero one six and CUP fourteen dash zero two eight. MM, number one. And find that the project includes minor alterations to previously adopted mitigated negative declaration for the previously approved project as outlined within the addendum.
And would you like to push the button on your screen?
I didn't know this was part of the new procedure.
We have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner French. Yes, we do. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Then let us call for the question. Let the record show that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. Congratulations. Okay. That brings us to item eight F.
This item will also be presented by Matthew Alcarone.
Good evening. Tentative tract map seven one three five seven is located on the south side of Rancho Vista Boulevard at Dulson Drive, shown in the blue outline. The applicant is seeking approval for the second and final tentative tract map extension. The tract map creates ninety-nine single-family residential lots, including two detention basins. All lots meet the minimum lot width, depth, and area of the Rancho Vista specific plan. The options tonight for the planning commission are to approve, continue, or deny the application. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alcarone. Are there any technical questions for staff at this time? All right, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If you are here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Any commissioner discussion? All righty, then may I get a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution number PC two zero one nine zero four six approving tentative tract map seven one three five seven, time extension number two. And find that the project will not result in any changes to the previously adopted mitigated, uh, negative declarations.
We can't, it's not on our screen.
No.
We could push the button if the button were available. This is high-tech up here, you guys. It looks like that on our screens right now. Look, Miguel walks out of the room and we fire a fire. This is not good. Oh, okay, we have a motion.
I, I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner French and a second from Commissioner Avery. Any discussion on the motion? Then let us call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. Thank you very much, and that will bring us to item eight G.
This item will be presented by Justin Sauter.
Hello, once again. We have yet another tentative tract map extension. Um, and the applicant, West Palm Development Corporation, is requesting for a three-year time extension. Um, the map is located on the northeast corner of Avenue R and Sixtieth Street East. And this will be the final time extension for this map. The project would subdivide approximately ten acres into twenty-eight single-family lots and one detention basin. Access to the tract is provided from Sixtieth Street East, and the internal streets provide access to the existing tract to the east from Sandwood Way. And there's also an access point for a future tract to the north. A variance from the minimum lot depth of one hundred and ten feet was approved for lots seven and eight down on the bottom southeast corner. The variance was necessary in order to provide access via Sandwood Way while maintaining the required right-of-way for Avenue R. All other lots meet the minimum development standards. The planning commission has three options tonight. Option one is to approve. Option two is to continue. Option three is to deny. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Are there technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody's here to speak, please come forward. And you'll have three minutes. And seeing no one.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Any commissioner discussion? All right, then, who's gonna use their finger and their voice at the same time to make the motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to adopt resolution number two zero one nine dash oh forty-eight approving tentative tract map sixty-three four one two, time extension number two, and find that the project is consistent with the previously approved mitigated negative declaration.
And I'll second it.
Push the button.
Oh, oops. Sorry.
This is really confusing. All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner French. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then we shall call for the question. Let the record show that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. Thank you very much, and that will bring us to item eight H.
This item will also be presented by Justin Sauter.
All right, the applicant is Las Islas Maria's Restaurant, and they have a request to expand an existing bona fide restaurant located at two one three three East Palmdale Boulevard and change their existing ABC license from a type forty-one beer and wine to a type forty-seven on-sale general, which means hard alcohol liquor as well. The onsite improvements will include construction of the restaurant expansion, parking lot and landscaping upgrades, and sidewalk along the project frontage on Palmdale Boulevard. The site will gain access from existing entrances on Palmdale Boulevard, Twenty-Second Street East, and the existing alley to the north behind the building. The new building will add five thousand two hundred fifty square feet, and a new parking lot will be constructed along with landscaping on the north side of the building. There are two access points on Palmdale Boulevard in front of the project site that are striped for parking, but have been used as driveways for several years. These two unofficial driveways on the project frontage will be closed, restripped, and utilized for parking. The drive approaches will be closed off by pouring of new curb, gutter, and sidewalk just along this project frontage. The proposed expansion includes additional seating, a bar, dance floor, and a stage area for entertainment. The applicant is conditioned to get an entertainment permit, a dance permit, and a manager's permit from the business license division. The project is considered a bona fide restaurant with alcohol sales because the restaurant has an operational kitchen. Food is served until one half hour prior to closing. Patrons are not served while standing at a counter. No more than ten percent of the gross floor area will be used for the sale, display, and storage of alcohol. And no more than thirty percent of the gross floor area will be utilized for the dance floor. The proposed hours of operation are between ten thirty AM and ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, and ten thirty AM until two AM Friday and Saturday. The restaurant expansion has been designed to ensure consistency with the existing restaurant. The new structure will be constructed of stucco with a brick facade and columns and a tile roof to match the existing building. A new gable roof element and stucco columns will be added to the existing and the proposed addition enhancing both entrances to the building. Here are pictures of the existing building and adjacent buildings in the area. The project has also been conditioned to provide a color scheme that is consistent with the general plan and will com- complement other buildings within the immediate vicinity. In addition, the parapet above the porch roof to which the sign is attached is currently covered in roof tile. In order to enhance the design of the building and provide consistency within the center, the project has been conditioned to remove the roof tiles and stucco the parapet and add a crown molding on top. Existing roof-mounted equipment can currently be seen from a public right-of-way, but will be screened with the addition of parapet and roof screens. And here is the west elevation that will actually be adjacent to an existing building, and then the east elevation, which is vacant. Was facing a vacant lot. The PMC requires that the planning commission may consider over-intensification, high crime, hours of operation, and the surrounding area with regards to the approval of the CUP. There are two methods to determine over-intensification. The first method is the population density method. This method determines a site to be over-intensified when the ratio of the population to on-sale establishments within the census tract exceeds the ratio of population to on-sale establishments for the entire city. This site would not be considered to have an over-intensification because four on-sale establishments are allowed, and there are four within the census tract, in- including this restaurant. Here is where the restaurant is located within the census tract. The second method to determine over-intensification is the retail density method. This method determines a site to be over-intensified when the number of on-sale establishments within a radius of twenty-five hundred feet of the location in question exceeds the average of the number of on-sale establishments within a radius of twenty-five hundred feet of a random sample of twenty on-sale establishments. The site would not have an over-intensification because nine on-sale establishments are allowed within the radius, and there are only eight existing within the radius. Here are twenty randomly selected sites for the retail density method. The site is within a high-crime area because it exhibits a crime rate that is four hundred and thirty-seven percent of the citywide average. However, the site exhibits only one hundred and twelve percent of the average crime in the developed portions of the city. This map shows the nine developed districts in the city, and again, the project site in relation. And this map shows the crimes committed in district, crime reported in District twenty-six zero eight, and again, the project site. There have been four calls for service within the last year at this location. The Sheriff's Department recommends approval of the CUP with modified hours of operation as stated within the supplemental staff report before you. The Sheriff's Department recommends that the business close at midnight rather than two AM Friday through Sunday. Also within the supplemental staff report is a minor change to finding E of the resolution. If the business generates an increase in the number of calls for service, the Sheriff's Department may ask for a subsequent review of the CUP by the planning commission. Bonafide restaurants are required to be one thousand feet from sexually oriented businesses. There are no sexually oriented businesses with thousand feet of the restaurant. However, there are single-family homes approximately one hundred and fifty feet north of the restaurant. The project has been conditioned to help mitigate potential noise impacts, such as requiring the doors on the north side of the building may not be propped open after seven PM. The planning commission has three options tonight. Option one is to approve the project as amended. Option two is to continue the item. Option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Are there technical questions for staff at this time?
In the report where it talks about the crime statistics, it just generally says it's mostly larceny, uh, crimes. Is there any further breakdown of, uh, crimes for like part one, part two, and types of crimes? I know on the pictures, the, the little dots have different colors.
We do receive a report that has more detailed information about the crimes. I don't remember all the details of the report, other than the majority of them were for larceny. At this specific site, though, there were only four calls for service.
Is there a way to get the additional information of the whole, not just the site, but the whole uh, district that it falls within?
Yeah, that, of it, that information is available. Yes. This one.
So what is, it's kinda hard to read the little words. Oh, part one, part two.
Part one and part two.
So part one are the serious violent felonies? Like murder?
I'm, I would have to defer.
Yeah, we would defer to Sergeant Murphy.
So there seems to be a lot of purple in this area. Right, that's part two, part two. And then the part one is the, the burgundy dots. But we don't really get a breakdown of what those are, other than just the dots.
Sergeant, could you come up to the podium? Could you come up to the podium to answer some questions, please?
Hello. All right, I put you on there.
Commissioner Henderson, could you restate your question?
The question would be...
So, it just seems to me, um, that along Palmdale Boulevard over the years, and it, it kinda seems like this is turning into a nightclub.
Can you ask the question straight out without the commentary at the moment, please?
Oh, gotcha.
Thank you.
What is your opinion of crime along the Boulevard?
Palmdale's a busy, busy area, to be honest with you, the crime from twenty-six ten, twenty-six eleven, twenty-six oh eight, all RDs. It's all different crimes throughout the day. This is generated by a crime analyst at the station. I don't know the breakdown for that as well. I can give you the best answer that Justin did as well. So I can't elaborate any further on that.
Do you not?
I'm not familiar how many domestic violences, how many assaults with deadly weapons, how many theft reports. Cannot tell you that. That's all done through a crime analyst, and I believe that information is provided to, to you guys, or to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have, sorry.
Thank you. So would you be interested in seeing a more detailed report on that?
It would be nice. Um, I mean, it just...
Okay.
Staff can include that detailed information in future reports.
Thank you. All right, are there any other technical questions for staff at this time?
So the, um, applicant, um, is the applicant the, uh, landlord? Also? So all this, all this work is being done primarily by the landlord? The, the, you know, the change of the parking lot, the...
No, it'll all be done by the tenant. Well, it, it's up to the tenant to work that out with the landlord. But it's, it's, the conditions are upon the, uh, CUP.
And, and building a new building, too?
Right.
Wow, okay. Um, well, just one more thing. So, I, I'm sure the applicant's here tonight, but, um, and I can ask them unless you happen to know. Do you know the current operation hours of the restaurant?
I believe they close at ten, but that would be...
We'll ask them, okay. Uh, that's all I have for now.
It, it just seems to me, with the size of the expansion, like it's turning into a nightclub. And it says it's still going to be a bona fide restaurant, but, I mean, how do we know? Is it gonna be a nightclub, or is it gonna be a restaurant?
The legal definition of a bona fide restaurant is, uh, that they continue to operate the kitchen within half an hour of closing time. And that's, uh, pursuant to ABC, uh, code, um, and our municipal code as well. So if it's going to be classified as a nightclub, then they wouldn't have food service up until half an hour of closing time. And they also have a dance floor that's less than thirty percent of the floor area.
Now, it says that the floor's thirty percent of the floor area, but couldn't that change over time? I mean, do we continue to inspect it? To see that it doesn't change?
We are reactive. We, um, we do proactive inspections for the alcohol portion of the CUP. And so they'll be doing stings and, and that sort of thing over time. Um, but if we had a complaint, we would go in there and we would investigate and ensure compliance. If we were to receive a uh, application for a building permit to modify something, the required building permit. Uh, planning would be involved and would ensure that those limitations are maintained.
Okay, thank you. All right, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak, please come forward, state your name. And you will have three minutes to speak. It will not be a dialogue. You will ask any questions. I will record them and we'll get them answered prior to our vote. Thank you. And I do have a speaker slip from Marie R. Manella. Would you like to speak now? Ms. Manella? Okay. I have a speaker slip from Javier Flores.
Madam Chair and Commissioners. The Palmville Prevention Community Council, well, my name is Javier Flores and I'm here representing the Palmville Prevention Community Council. We stand in opposition to the granting of conditional use permit. Allowing the change of the existing license type forty one to type forty seven for the sale of hard liquor. At Las Islas Marias located at twenty one twenty one East Palmdale Boulevard. Uh, for the reasons listed below. Number one. The city acknowledges that the crime reporting district in which the applicant establishment is located has a very high crime rate. According to city staff calculations, this year. RD has a rate four hundred and forty seven percent higher than the city average. This is corroborated by ABC, which looked like crime for a different year and still reached the same conclusion. The city looked at two thousand eight and ABC, ABC looked at two thousand sixteen crime rates. It has high incidence rates for aggravated assault, non-aggravated assault, offense against family. Drunk driving and other alcohol related crime. Uh, please see the attached CRD report from the Palmville Sheriff's Department, which we think is gonna answer a lot of your questions, Commissioner Anderson. Uh, the census tract at which the applicant business is located presently has more alcohol outlets than the prescribed. Than that prescribed by the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. Though the CT has four on sale ABC, uh, uh, four on sale. And ABC allows for four, uh, the planning commis-. Commission should take into account and navigate the six off sale outlets that also exist in the area. Some of which sell hard liquor. Allowing the additional sale of spirits in the CT would increase the amount of alcohol sales. Which inevitably increases the crime rate and impacts negatively on the residents who live in very close proximity. Uh, so I just want to mention, um. The crime that exists, the report that you've got does describe to some extent. A little bit more in detail the types of crime that are occurring, but I think we still need more detail. For example, the aggravated, non-aggravated assault or the assault against family. Does that mean spousal abuse? Does that mean child abuse? What exactly does that mean? And we are very happy to hear that one of the commissioners or several of the commissioners are concerned about that question. And want it answered as well as we do. So I just want to say that. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores. Mrs. Manella?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. So, um, the PCC is extremely concerned. That the establishment is seeking um, a modification that will metamorphosis a bona fide restaurant into a nightclub on the weekends. Though the owner is claiming not to want the con- um, to conduct a bar or nightclub. It is nevertheless being granted the opportunity to submit permits for the purpose of using the dance floor and stage areas for entertainment. Um, so you can show number seventy. Um, so clear definitions are presently lacking and would be very helpful in ensuring that restaurants do not turn into nightclubs. We recommend clear definitions for bars, nightclubs and restaurants and how these are distinguishable one from the other. And be developed and incorporated into the existing alcohol ordinance before making a decision tonight. The only thing that separates the proposed establishment expansion, including its new parking lot from residential homes, is an alley and a block fence. The light noise emanating, the noise and the light emanating from the establishment on the weekend. Is sure to find its way to the backyards of the homes and the residents who live there. Um, the staff report states that it has required conditions. Um, to abate the light and noise issues, but these are not sufficient. It is virtually impossible to control noise and light issues. And we should all recognize this fact. In addition, the establishment is just feet away from Wesley's Health Clinic. And across the street from LA Care Health Plan Family Resource Center. Unless there are limitations to the hours in which um, the alcohol can be sold. And avoid the sales during daytime hours, the clinic, staff and patrons may be adversely affected. Uh, we recommend that the planning commission postpone the granting of the application requested until more thorough analysis of the crime. Uh, crimes occurring in the CRD is conducted. We urge you to ask the sheriff's department to provide a report indicating the type of assaults in more detail, spousal abuse, child abuse, et cetera. If the planning commission decides to uh, proceed with the CUP application today. We recommend that the city grant the expansion of the restaurant, but not grant the CUP that would allow the sale of hard liquor. The planning commission would be wise to grant the expansion of the establishment. And after a two-year trial period reconsider the CUP application to include a license type change from beer and wine to general license. Pending on a good report from the Palmville Sheriff demonstrating no calls for services resulting from the consumption of alcohol. Respectfully submitted, Javier and Rosie Manella from the Palmville Prevention Community Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Manella. And I have another speaker slip here for Sarah Mora.
Good evening. Um, so I am an employee of Wesley Health Centers and I was invited here uh, by another. Uh, resident from Palmville, um, but obviously I came to speak as a resident. In the area, but then now that I know that it's in the vicinity of where I'm employed. And, and the business hours that they wanna get the license to sell, you know, hard liquor. Through the business hours that we are running our establishment. And we're open until six PM, which we have family members, children, you know, of all ages and adults of all ages. So this brings to the fact that if there's um, consumption of alcohol. Hard liquor, um, there was mean they would be intoxicated and driving in the parking lot, so that brings the safety of our patients. And as well as, you know, the surrounding residence, which is an alley of apartment buildings and or town homes and homes. So my concern is please reconsider this. Have more uh, reports from the sheriffs as there is a lot more reports because we ourselves call in reports. From homeless that come and, you know, do um, break into our cars while we're at work. Um, our cars being hit by, you know, people under the influence of alcohol. I don't know if they show up at their restaurant or what, but I know our employees' cars have been hit by other drivers, not our own. Um, employees, other residents and um, so I'm just, that's what I would like to speak on. I wish I had more words and I wish I had more employees from Wesley here. So, um. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mora. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Is the applicant here? Could you please come forward?
Good evening, uh, planning commissioners. Uh, I'm the engineer of the project and the applicant is behind me. I, I appreciate the comments that we receive from a couple of people here. Uh, there's in any, in this particular project, there is five different authorities. That, that make determination. First of all, there is the federal. And second, there is the manufacturer of alcohol. And then, then third, there is the local authority, which is you, and fourth is the owner and number fifth is the users. So, uh, I would recommend that, uh. The people who spoke. And they have some concern, maybe they should shoot up higher to, to the federal and to the manufacturer and. Number one. Number two, as the city, uh, the, the city are doing their job. And Mr. Soder, he really had very good restriction on, on my client. And how he has to operate the, uh, our operations and so on. And the city in general, they have full control and if have the implementing their goals and. And uh, politics, and goals and operation regarding this piece of property which is in infield. So, uh, my client, uh, as well, he is also. Uh, follow very strict rules and regulations with his clients. Uh, it's not gonna be a nightclub. It is a place where people can go and have a good time dinner. And maybe they have a glass of wine, a glass of whatever they want to drink. And maybe they're gonna have, uh, what I understand that they may have some weddings occasionally and so on. And because the building is pretty large, large size. So, uh, he's doing his job toward, uh, his clients. As well, he has very good security, a plan which the city requested. And in addition, uh, they are in operation for very many years. They have a lot of restaurants in rivers. They have, I think, in fifteen cities in the United States, they have similar operation and this is one of their smallest one. Uh, you know, a lot of people, they say, uh, guns does not kill people. Uh, alcohol does not kill people as well if we use the same. Uh, concept and so on. So, uh, based on that, uh. There is more crime as a matter of fact, as I heard by the mall. Due to the fact that as the sheriff mentioned, there's a lot of people in that area. There's more people at the mall area, but there is higher crime rate at the mall and area. And there's a bunch of restaurants, they have similar operations to what my clients is requested.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Do we have questions for the owner applicant? Are you the owner?
Yes.
Yes. So do you want to ask your question you had earlier about the?
Unless, unless you want to make a statement first, because I might, that might bring up another question or so.
Uh, statement or just a opinion or anything?
Okay, well, um, sure, I have some questions. That's okay. Um, this young lady here mentioned stage area. Are you, do you have a stage in there? I didn't see that in the. Oh, there was, there's an actual stage that's incorporated with the dance floor.
Not incorporated?
Or? Yes. Oh, yeah, sorry.
The stage is the one.
Does it say stage on there? I didn't see.
This is, this is the stage area.
Oh, stage area, okay, I see that now. So the stage area is about the same size as the dance floor. Is that correct or?
It appeared to be raised a little bit. There was a step to it.
Yes, from my understanding, it will be raised.
Is the concept of that for a band?
Live music.
Live music.
And, um, what are your current uh, hours of operation?
Current operations till, um, from ten to nine. On Sundays, we close at nine.
So you're ten to nine on Sundays? If anybody else has a question.
It, it, it just seems like, I mean, it could go a couple of different directions. Um, mentioning like the weddings and stuff, I mean, that seems like, you know, a less. Kind of crime driven kind of an activity, um, banquets and weddings and things like that. But the nightclub part, which seems a little scary on Palmville Boulevard. It's just hard to tell the direction it's gonna go.
I understand, um, we have the same issue with every other location here in California. Uh, it's not gonna be a nightclub. At most, it's just a bar and grill. It's just a bar that we're adding. Um, but even that, we have our own security team. Which will be there till closing time. And then even after closing times on weekends, we have an other security that stays there till like probably six, seven AM. It's clear and at dark enough for them to leave. And besides our security, uh. The shopping center, the shopping mall around us have their own security that takes care of ours and theirs at the same time. So, I mean, we have twenty four hour camera surveillance and we're gonna have even more.
Will your security be armed security or just?
Armed security and the entrance, they will check, um, guys and then girls, just their purses. And they'll make sure of no alcohol or bottles leave the restaurant. Um, I will have some security outside checking the parking lot and then some security inside and in the back as we do in every location.
Really, so there's a whole bunch of these restaurants?
We're in fifteen states. Right here in California, there's at least twenty five locations.
Wow.
So, mm-hmm.
It's like a chain.
We've done this before.
That's what they're gonna ask. Oh, the security plan. So does the security plan require the armed guards or security or is it? Um, that's your choice?
That's my choice.
And what is the minimum requirement for the security?
Um, that would be a great question for Public Safety Division. Um, our Crime Prevention Division reviews the security plan. Do not know of all the requirements.
They'll be requiring that there be cameras and that there be recording devices. And that the uh, be training of the manager and staff for proper alcohol sales and handling. Um, as well as a written manual on what the procedures will be. And this is something that we provide the minimum standards, the applicant fills in the rest. And then that is an enforceable document. So if we move forward and it turns out to be a, a problem at the site. Uh, we could use that to uh, either get compliance. Uh, without coming back to the planning commission, or if we are unsuccessful getting compliance. We would then bring the application back to the planning commission for reconsideration of the conditional use permit. At which point the planning commission could revoke or modify the conditional use permit.
So that, um, oh, I, I think, I think that's all my questions for you.
Um, we'll discuss. So you, you operate multiple restaurants. And this particular restaurant, do you, are you there? Uh, every day or you just haven't, you're there every day? And how long have you been operating that restaurant?
Uh, it's gonna be two years now.
Okay, and it's, it's a Mexican restaurant and you make margaritas out of wine, correct? So you're doing an expansion and it seems to me that instead of just expanding a Mexican restaurant. You're in keeping your hours where you're closing at ten and nine on Sundays. Now you wanna make a bigger Mexican restaurant, but you wanna have dancing, a stage, which is gonna means eventually performances. And stay open quite a bit later. Okay.
Um, we were good how we were. But when we first got here and we realized we own not only the actual property we have right now, but the one next door to it. Like, as soon as we realized that, it was always in our head to go bigger, because we have other businesses just like that one. And they all close at two in the morning, Friday to Sunday here in California. So that's what we're going to just, all our businesses with hard liquor are at this level have that same time schedule. And I understand here's a little differently, um, from the other counties or other cities and stuff, so. I told him that it's Sundays, we can't close to two in the morning. I agree with that, because maybe Sundays we might not really eat it. But Friday and Saturday is what I'm going towards.
Okay, so I, I go to a lot of Mexican restaurants and what I just heard an answer you gave a second ago was that. People are gonna be coming in there and check by security. So if I go in there for lunch at noon with my wife, I'm gonna get frisked or checked.
Would be by the time there's live music and all.
Okay, which, so it's kind of transitioning at some point in the evening from a restaurant to. A point where people are coming in and you're concerned about safety and having to check them for whatever.
I mean, because of our past experiences in other businesses, you know, it's, there's been occasions or situations that we didn't expect and we're just, we're learning from that. And I don't wanna risk anything in this business, because I've learned from my past mistakes. It's just me being secure of all my own location and the people that are going in and out.
Okay, I have no further questions.
I just wanted to make a point, um, that it has been modified at the request of the sheriff's department. That closing time. In this CUP would be at midnight Friday through Sunday. You're aware of that? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? All right, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner, discussion.
I think, um, the lady in the green, what was her name? Rosie? She had a, seemed like a reasonable, um, request to kind of gradually. Step it up into, um, see what it's gonna turn into. Um, I think again, the, the uses that are the banquets and the maybe quinceañeras or the. Um, these kind of more family, um, uses where it's not gonna turn into, cuz, you know. When you're a full-blown nightclub, you will be a great proprietor, but you get knuckleheads that show up. And they drink too much, and they turn into knuckleheads. So, um. Anyway, that's just what worries me about it, is the escalation, I mean, it's, the nature of this. Is significantly changing. It's going from a nice little family restaurant into something significant. And if it's that nature of still remains safe. Um, I'm okay with safe, I'm just nervous about knucklehead drunks, you know?
And we have, and we have seen that in, across the street when it was Leonardo's, I know that happened there. Slight expansion there, we've seen it with Crave, um.
And those were all good proprietors, you know, who had, who tried very hard to. Um, have safety plans and so forth like that, you just can't control knuckleheads.
I'm excited about the fact that you feel the expansion. Is needed, it's a good thing if people are going out to dinner and, and looking for places to have quinceañeras and looking for. You know, places to go out, that, that's always a good thing for our city to have a, a need for more business space. But I too am concerned about the need to sell hard alcohol. To make that happen. And I think this is a lot in one change at a time, hence the term major modification, I guess, but. Um, it's pretty major, in my opinion.
I'd just like to add that. Um, I, I read this page cover to cover quite a few times, just to make sure I, I was reading this all right. I, uh, I think every Mexican restaurant should make margaritas with tequila. So I don't have, I personally, I don't have an issue with you guys going to the, uh, type forty-seven. If this, if this application had said, we're gonna expand our restaurant, we would like to be able to have margaritas with tequila. And we're gonna still close at ten o'clock, we're not, we're not gonna have a dance floor, we're just gonna make a big restaurant where people are gonna come in and enjoy our great food. Uh, I, I, you'd have my vote, but I just am really leery about this whole thing about. Okay, now if I go over there on a Friday at nine o'clock at night with my wife for dinner, I'm gonna have a security guy pat me down or. Which is what they're gonna do. That, that concerns me, and, um. I don't think I can support what, what's in this package tonight.
I think, I think, um. Yeah, I think, I think much the same, actually. Uh, if it was, if it was either or, I think, and, and actually, um, your statements about the security and checking and. While it, that may seem, um, to put people at ease, it actually had the opposite effect for me. Um, as Bart said, if it was, we, I, I think there's a definite need for places that have. Uh, the space for dance floors and to hold, um, yeah, quinceañeras, but also other types of events, family events. We don't really have an awful lot of that around here, um, so I was happy to see that. But looking at the two AM, um, and again, I don't have a, a problem with the hard alcohol itself either in a restaurant. Um, if you're going to be serving mixed drinks, you, you need it, that's, that's just the way it is in restaurants. Um, but I agree that the expansion, um, from a, a solid restaurant to both. With the need for the armed guards, I think that that, um, while it provides security, it also adds an element to it. Um, that'll be a deterrent, if there's somewhere that we have to go in with armed guards and, and I'm going to be checked and, then no, I'm not gonna bring my kids in there. It's, it's just a field that's there, and I think that that in and of itself sometimes leads to the very atmosphere that you're trying to avoid. Um, and so that, that for me actually, um. Right, yeah. I, I would agree, uh, I, I would be in favor of doing one or the other and seeing how it goes, doing the expansion. Without the, the hard alcohol, without the need for that, because if you don't have the hard alcohol, it, it does the opposite, it keeps certain people away. Um, so it, you know, when you, when you do both and you have the, the dan, the band. And, and that's really what it is, is an area for a band and hard liquor, and now you're not talking about families coming in for quinceañeras and all of that. Now you're talking about, um, a band where singles are gonna come in and it's, it is a different feel. Um, and so, for me, uh, it would make more sense to me to, to do one or the other. Um, have the hard liquor and see how it goes in that area, or expand to make the dance floor and see how it does as a family restaurant with the beer and the wine. And then if that was successful, um, then maybe add in the hard liquor and see if it, if it keeps that. Because it's been established as a, as a facility, as opposed to, um, a nightclub kind of a feel, if that makes sense. So. These are always hard, because. You want to support businesses, especially family restaurants, and especially where there is a need, and I do, there is a need. For areas with this type of, um, offering, um, but it, it just seems to me that. Uh, and it is laid out, the way it's laid out, the dance is in a different area, I could have dinner over here and not be. Quite as affected by what's going on in the dance area, I do see that. Um, so, you know, I always wanna support local businesses where we can, um, where there's a need. But I, I am concerned about, um, it suddenly becoming not a family restaurant, but something else entirely. With armed guards and, and all of that, um, so.
I think perhaps our best action at tonight would be to try and continue the item and ask for staff to. Perhaps get a little more information on the crime statistics that have been requested, as well as discuss with the applicant. How they could make this more. Amenable, is it feasible to do the expansion without the, um, alcohol permit? Um, obviously, our big concern would be, it appears to be trending towards a nightclub. And nightclubs have caused problems in this city in the past, so that, that is a big concern, I think, for all of us up here. So if there is a way to come back with more information. As to.
Um, of, of course, uh, we could do that, um, if the planning commission, it sounds though that the planning commission. Might be comfortable if the applicant were, uh, tonight willing to accept maintaining his current ABC license. And expanding the restaurant as designed. And if that's the case, um, I would recommend that we may, maybe we ask the applicant that right now. And, um, he could have an answer. If, um, the additional crime information is critical to making that decision, then of course, we should continue it.
I think with the existing, uh, license, I think it keeps it from jumping to this significant level. Um, and it could seem like it'd be able to keep more into control, and, and like she was saying. You know, you, you're gonna keep the knuckleheads away that wanna come and. Go to that extra level, it's gonna be more problematic.
Doesn't preclude it from, from a different license later on, once it's established and, and it has a reputation.
Which is the, the, uh, what was it, or offered here, the recommendation, it seemed very reasonable that she said. Just kind of ease into this thing and see what the nature of the beast turns out to be.
Okay, so are you in agreement if we were to remove the change of alcohol license type? Would you still be interested in going ahead with the expansion portion of your plan?
Is that something I could later on deal with and figure out, or if I agree with you guys, that's it?
You would still have an opportunity in the future to apply to change your license type? Correct?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Okay.
And still bring back that data, the crime data. Um, I mean, for, for the future, for future purposes.
In future reports.
For future reports and just in general, I think when we get these reports and they say. There's so many crimes, they're mostly larceny, um, I'd like to drill down into assault type stuff. Um, because, you know, again, as they mentioned, our, we've, we've had this history over the years of. Nightclubs having problems, and they've all been good proprietors, it's just. Knuckleheads show up and get in fights in the parking lot.
But pertinent to this, I'm gonna look for some guidance from you, Mr. Bruce, on how we go about phrasing this properly. Or to you, Mr. Doran, because you seem to know a lot more over there.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'd know a lot more, uh, I, I think what I'm hearing. Um, is, is that the planning commission is, is interested in. Making the findings to approve the, the site plan portion of the application. Um, but at this time, the, the planning commission can't make the finding that the proposed use is beneficial and desires to the community. As designed, and, and based on some of the crime numbers. Um, there's some concerns that it, it doesn't comply with the purpose and intent of the alcohol ordinance, um.
Very well said.
So I, I think what my recommendation would be, would be to direct staff to, to bring back. Um, at the next meeting, uh, maybe two resolutions, one which would approve the site plan for the expansion. And then, and then one which would, uh, deny the, the increased. Um, alcohol use. And then, and I give the one question I, I would ask, if that's the desire of the, of the commission. Um, generally speaking, if an application is denied, they need to wait a period of one year to reapply. Uh, but the commission does have the opportunity to deny it without prejudice and, and allow them to apply sooner than that one year. If that's the desire of the planning commission. And Rob may have some additional comments.
The request is to, uh, expand the CUP for the new floor area.
Yeah.
So, um, I was hoping that we could just add a condition that the, um, expansion is limited. To the sale of beer and wine. And all the findings would then still apply. And it would just be that they're not, uh, approved to upgrade to, uh, full alcohol. Um, but they could come back and apply for that, uh, at a future date.
Yeah, would there be any to actually deny it at this time, as opposed to?
Modify.
Just modifying it?
Cuz if the, if the application were just to expand the existing beer and wine, we would have exactly the same findings.
So, so, we've got, like, two pieces of a plan here, right? We've got the expansion, and then we have the alcohol expansion. So we can just take the floor space expansion, the, the building expansion. And separate that out from.
Remove items.
The alcohol and. We wouldn't be denying any, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be denying the expansion.
If legal counsel confirms.
I believe item seventy-eight is the one, um, condition seventy-eight on page forty-three. Is the sale of alcohol beverages is approved under the CUP for the restaurant for type forty-seven. So if that were to be removed from the CUP, does that? Cover what we're trying to accomplish?
I would say that it is approved for the type forty-one. And just change that language in this condition.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I think you could amend condition seventy-eight to, from type seven, type forty-seven. To type forty-one, is there a reference to the, to type forty-seven anywhere else in the conditions?
No.
I mean, you could, you could, you could make the motion to.
Remove.
Approve it, but to change any reference to type forty-seven to type forty-one. Yeah, we could do it that way, that would be fine.
So would there be some language amending on the fly here?
Think you just did.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Okay, would have to be in the recitals on page twenty-one as well, and then. Those are the only places that I see it.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think there's. Two amendments that are, are possible here, there, there's the amendment, um, as requested by. The Sheriff's Department to change the hours of operation from, uh, two to, to midnight. That's, that's one possible amendment, and then the second one would be to change all reference. Uh, to type forty-seven to type forty-one.
So don't all jump at once, but you want to make this motion.
So you can make a, a, a motion to approve the item, um, with the amendment in, uh. Condition seventy-three to change the hour of two AM to twelve AM. And to change condition seventy, well. And to change any reference to type forty-seven to type forty-one.
Correct. That sounds like what we wish to do. Can we just say, as our city assistant attorney said?
You can make that your motion, yes.
Cuz you've been listening to all of that, right, Lynn?
Back to the. It's on tape.
There we go. Well, given that, I would like to, uh, motion exactly that with the amendment. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion. From Commissioner French.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Henderson. Discussion on the motion. I think we all understand what we just did, right?
I think so.
Okay. So basically, this means that everything would go ahead, continuing with the same type of alcohol sales that they have. And expanding their hours of operation to midnight on the weekends.
And I would suggest if and when they do come back for the additional permit, that you bring, um, not only the, the, um. Statistics that he is looking for, but also specific site. Uh, you know, what, what calls for service had been at that facility in the past, and then since we've done this expansion as well.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, then we shall call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with three yes votes. One no vote from Commissioner Avery and Commissioner Smith absent. All right, there you have it, that was like our longest discussion ever, you should feel like. Okay, that brings us to item nine, staff communications.
Uh, in front of you is the draft agenda for next month's meeting, you will see that it's a little bit lighter than what we've dealt with tonight. Um, included in there is, uh, a report on the progress of our general plan update. So we're looking forward to bringing that, so it's sharing with you what we've learned from the community and the GPAC so far. Uh, this is a multi-year project, so we're barely a year into it, so it's gonna still be a little while, but there's, there's a lot of work going on there. Um, also some surprising good news to report. Uh, last Thursday, I was down at SCAG while they were reviewing their, uh, methodology for the Rena or LaRana. However, we're gonna say it, and previously, as we discussed, the preliminary number for Palmdale was over eleven thousand. Units, and there was a proposed amendment from the mayor of the city of Riverside. That they take local input out of methodology, now that sounds a little scary, uh, on the face of it. But what local input is, is SCAG takes everybody's projected residential population from their general plans. And throws that into the mix, so areas like Palmdale where we've got vast areas of vacant land. You know, our, our potential for growth is very high. Unfortunately, we don't have the jobs or the high quality transit areas to support the number of residences. Um, areas on the, in the basin, though, do have that infrastructure necessary. So, um, the subcommittee that is weighing this. Uh, heavily supported by the mayor of Los Angeles and the mayor of Culver City. Uh, voted to remove local input, which effectively cut Palmdale's number down to around six thousand. And vastly increased the number for the coastal settings, so if you've seen it in the paper, they're referring to it as. The coastal change, but in reality, it's the inland change, uh, so those areas, you know, we don't have the infrastructure. We don't, we don't have sewers to a lot of the areas of zoned, uh, residential. And we don't have very much water, so, you know, getting these huge numbers for a long time, I personally didn't think it made a lot of sense. Um, I think this, while I did think the methodology was the fairest that I've seen, and I've been over. Or rode on cycles that I could remember, um, and but but this is is truly starting to reflect, um, you know. Put the houses where the jobs are, and that's going to really reduce the vehicle miles traveled, reduce the pollution. And greenhouse gas emissions and everything that this age really trying to encourage.
So this is a, it's not a done deal yet, this is their proposal?
That, that is, um, it was voted on by SCAG and it is being sent to HCD, the. California Department of Housing and Community Development, they have to approve the methodology. So they've got a sixty or ninety day window to review and comment back. And, uh, once they've made their comments, it'll go back to the SCAG board for adoption.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bruce.
And that's it for staff.
Mr. Doran, do you have any words of wisdom to add? Wow, you used them all up already, huh? That was quite difficult earlier, I think, but thank you. Alright, Planning Commission Communications. Alright, then we shall adjourn our meeting to our regular Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, December twelfth at seven PM.